I can't see you over there. You have to move over that way. If you raise your hand. Okay, I'm gonna call the board. The regular meeting of the Township of Bernards Planning Board for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Please rise for the flag salute. Wow. And ladies and gentlemen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is ours. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
When was that changed?
I think Tyler changed it.
Motion to, motion to put it back.
Nope, for the record that the flag is. Okay, in accordance with, this is the open public's meeting statement of 2025. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975. Notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building. Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. Was sent to the Bernardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey. To the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey. On January 22nd, 2025. And was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM. And no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chairman of the Mr. Angelo.
Present.
Mr. Crane.
Mr. Crane.
He's here by phone.
You gotta make it louder.
He, he just, hold on. Can you say that again, Mr. Crane?
I'm here on the phone.
There we go.
For the record, Mr. Crane is attending by phone.
Mr. Oreo.
Here.
Mr. Ledezinski.
Here.
Mr. Rubino.
Here.
Mr. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Tancredi.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Drill.
Here.
Mr. Schley.
Yes.
And for the record, Ms. Layman is present.
Thank you. For the record, we have received advance notice that Mr. Cuzo, Ms. Manduke, and Ms. O'Malley are not able to attend. May I have a motion to excuse their absences, please?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Seville. I don't need a, do I need a roll call?
I have a voice book.
You can use a voice book.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular session from July 22nd, 2025. These minutes have been distributed in advance to board members. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, edits for the record? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 22nd?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Seville has the motion, second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Rubino, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Ledezinski, Mr. Seville, and Ms. Smith are not eligible to vote on the minutes.
Oh, sorry then, we need a different motion.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Mr. Tancredi is making the motion to approve the minutes. And Mr. Rubino is the second, still?
Second.
May I have a motion? I mean, may I have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Mr. Rubino.
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi.
Yes.
Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Mr. Oreo.
Yes.
Chairman of Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Thank you.
And how many extensions do we have? Three, correct?
Three.
We have Seville, Smith, and Ledezinski.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, the next item on the agenda was going to be the review of the annual parking report for Fellowship Village. They have asked us to adjourn that review until October 21st of this year. So, um, with that, I'm going to just make that recommendation, right?
Make that decision.
Make that decision, okay?
Procedural, if anyone disagrees with you, they're gonna make a motion to overturn you on a majority vote. Anyone wanna make a motion to overturn the chair?
Good. Thank you for that, Mr. Drill, so we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education capital review for soccer and baseball improvements. Lot 2801, lot 6, 285 South Maple Avenue. And this is a capital review pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-31A. And may I have your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Heather Goldstein from Cleary Geico.
Heather Goldstein from, I'm sorry?
Cleary Geico.
And I take that's a law firm?
Yes.
And you represent the Board of Education, correct?
Yes, I represent the, you represent the Bernords Township Board of Education.
So, capital review pursuant to Section 31A of the Municipal Land use law. This is actually a hearing because 40:55, it's a non-noticed hearing. 40:55D-10A says municipal agency shall hold a hearing on each application for development. Blah, 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 blah. Or any review undertaken by a planning board pursuant to 40:55D-31. So, they're gonna have witnesses, we're gonna swear them in. And then they will present, it's, this is not an application for development. This is not courtesy review on a Section 31A capital review. The board has done a bunch of ordinance, master plan consistency reviews. This is similar but different. So, 31A says review of capital projects. And whenever the planning board has adopted any portion of a master plan, the governing body or other public agency having jurisdiction over a subject matter of a project, before the expenditure of public funds on that project, they have to refer the action involving this project to the planning board for review and recommendation in conjunction with the master plan. And that's what they're here for, to have you review their project against the master plan. And have the board say, is it consistent? Is it inconsistent? If it's inconsistent, how, and/or is it not inconsistent?
And, and this, our recommendation will go to the Board of Education Business Administrator?
Right, your decision on master plan consistency will go to, the letter, it won't be a resolution by me. It will be a letter from the Board Secretary addressed to the Business Administrator. And anyone who wants a copy of it, give your card to the Board Secretary and she'll put you as a CC on the letter. And the board can make non-binding recommendations, but doesn't have to.
Okay.
The only thing you have to do is review it against the master plan.
My other question is, if we're going to have some other witnesses, should we swear in everyone at the same time?
Yeah, I like swearing in everyone at the same time, so who do we have here that you plan on calling as a witness?
So, we have Jeffrey Morris, who's the engineer from Boswell Engineering. And if there are any other questions of the plan, we have Nick Markarian, Superintendent.
Yeah, can you spell his last name slowly for me?
I can spell it.
Okay.
M-A-R-K-A-R-I-A-N.
Yeah, that's not slow.
That's from having a child in Ridge.
Okay.
And we also have Jim Rollo, R-O-L-L-O, Business Administrator.
Okay, the Business Administrator, wave your hand. Okay, the letter's gonna be addressed to you. Anyone else who wants a CC, give your card to the Board Secretary. So, can the three of you stand up? And Dave Schley, just in case, can everyone raise the right hand? And all of you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give in this matter, or the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, here we go.
For the record, everyone agreed in the affirmative.
Yep.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Yes, so this project involves, uh, at Ridge High School, 285 South Maple Avenue. Replacing the soccer field with arti- artificial turf and proposed lights at the soccer field, as well as providing improvements for the baseball field at, um, the high school. Bleachers are gonna be replaced along with goalposts and score, scoreboards. There's a proposed concrete curving and a retaining wall around the soccer field. A major component of the project is the integration of an artificial turf field as part of stormwater management improvements. The design includes a stormwater detention basin to mitigate runoff and protect surrounding areas, which would ensure compliance with environmental standards while supporting the sustainability of the upgraded facilities. And, um, Mr. Morris can talk about that in more detail.
I want to call Mr. Morris.
Mr. Morris? You could also, if you prefer to use, you are gonna use it, I see.
Yes. Okay.
Would you like that, Mark?
Do you wanna stand at that mic, or do you wanna use the mic at the table? Whatever you're comfortable with.
Uh, if I have to point to things, I'll have to stand at that mic.
Yeah.
Just so you know, I do have the plans that were submitted to the board, um, to display if you like.
I'll tell you what, are these demonstrative exhibits, in other words, blowups of what you submitted digitally, or are they new or different?
This is new, that is just a, a, a blowup of the, the, uh.
Okay, so Dave, would you mind, can you get the, it looks like that's a site plan down there?
Yes.
Why don't you just put the site plan up, that's already in the file, we don't have to mark that.
Okay.
I mean, don't put it up, you don't have to put it up on the easel.
Okay.
Put it up on the screens?
Alright.
And that exhibit that you have up on the easel, that's a new one that we don't have digitally, is that correct?
This is new, yes.
So why don't we mark that as exhibit A1? And can you, you can do that in the lower right-hand corner near the, find a spot, put A1 with today's date on it. And what does it say down in that right-hand corner box?
It says Ridge High School Athletic Fields.
Perfect.
Partial topographic survey.
Partial topographic.
Partial topographic survey? And this is color rendered?
Yeah.
Well, it's color, it's a photograph.
Okay. Partial topographic survey photo, how's that?
Was that recently taken?
Uh, that is, uh, I believe is three years old.
Does it fairly and accurately represent?
Yes.
How the fields exist today?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanted to know that, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, so do you wanna describe, um, the improvements?
Sure. Yeah, so we were.
One last thing? Where did that photograph come from? Is that flown, is that satellite, is it Google? Do you, it should say somewhere on there, alright?
It is actually a, um, a GIS map from the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
From the state GIS survey. So, the reason I brought this is because I think with all my meetings with the Board of Education, this was the plan that they could all recognize because everybody's, everybody, I think, is familiar with the, with the facility. This, uh, this is a baseball field, a soccer field. The main football field for Ridge High School is over here.
indicating to the left of the.
The left of the exhibit.
The left of the exhibit, yes. I'm sorry. So, uh, one of the first things we were tasked with is there is extremely, a lot of drainage problems with all, all the fields, the softball field, the baseball field, and the soccer field. Uh, some of that be, is because, uh, a lot of that drainage emanates from the main campus and the football field. A lot of the main campus drains down in this direction towards the town facilities and the dog, the dog walk park and the softball field down there.
And that's because that's a lower elevation?
Yes. It comes, it comes like this, so. A couple of things we did was, uh, we wanted to put drainage improvements at the back of the baseball field. Previously, there were some drainage improvements in the softball field. And for the soccer field, since it's always soft, the, the idea was to artificial turf with storage facilities underneath the artificial turf for, uh, for runoff. So, uh, not only were we concerned about not, about not increasing any runoff off the site, but we were also concerned about the existing situation coming from this, the main campus and, and running across this facility, across Maple Avenue to two separate streams on the, on the, uh, east side of Maple Avenue. So, we. I'll go back now to the, our overall.
Dave, can you now match?
This is our overall, this is sheet, uh, I'm sorry. This is sheet five. There you go.
Dave's gonna be your digital.
My digital assistant, yeah. So, this is, our, our primary goal originally was drainage. So, we, uh, we were picking up the drainage from the high school and bringing it along this soccer field and disch, we're reducing the drainage area for that and discharging that on the, uh, south side of the soccer field. The soccer field, which, uh, which also flowed in this direction, we're putting artificial turf, storing it underneath and discharging it over to a detention pond, uh, which we're going to create next to the batting cages and where the basketball court is right now. So that detention pond will hold the runoff from the baseball field, the soccer field, and, and, and the rear of the softball field. And then discharge it into the existing swale which we're going to reinforce, which then flows into the drainage, uh, facilities in South Maple Avenue. Uh, that's the drainage aspects of it. One of the things with the Board of Ed was doing was, uh, since the soccer field is an integral part, it was, uh, because of the softness during wet weather, it was unplayable, usually half the season. So they wanted to put artificial turf on that. Uh, that's, that'll be an artificial turf field. Uh, we went out to bid, uh, there is a bid in now for actually lights on this field if the Board of Ed chooses to use, to put, to spend the money on the lights. But, so it'll be an artificial turf field, combination JV football, soccer, uh, lacrosse, and field, and field hockey. It'll be striped for all those events.
But for, for the board's purposes, you want the board to do this capital review assuming there's gonna be lights?
Yes.
You don't have to come back for anything.
Right, yeah, we might, we'll assume there's lights.
Everything on your wish list, you're proposing, correct?
So, yeah, we're proposing four lights on, on the field which will light it for those four sports. Football, soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey. We're also, uh, there were, there were existing stands on the west side of the field. Because of, we had to increase the size of the field to accommodate football, we're gonna move the stands to the east side of the field.
You're talking about bleachers?
Bleachers, yes, bleachers. So they will be new. Uh, also to accommodate the larger size, we'll be constructing, uh, a wall around the north side and the west side of the field.
Retaining wall.
Retaining wall. So the field can fit in there. And in a nutshell, that's really all we're proposing, as I said. The drainage to, to solve our problem and the neighbors' problems. Uh, the rear of the, the rear of the baseball field, the soccer field turf, and the detention pond and the improvements to the drainage in South Maple Avenue.
Are you doing a bit more of a netting too?
We're, we will have, the backstop, we have one of the alternates is a backstop. We're doing the backstop for the, uh, baseball field. And as part of, since we're against the dog, the, the dog park and up here, we'll have, uh, what's called ball catcher systems for lacrosse. So it'll be a, uh, I think it's an 18-foot high net to catch all the balls so they won't go off the field.
Can you talk a little bit about what's surrounding in terms of the neighborhood?
Sure. Uh, this is residential, I can't remember the name of the street.
Did you refer to that on the map?
That's west.
Yeah, west, west of, the southwest corner of the soccer field has, uh, or the west side has residential, one residential dwelling at the end of a, end of a cul-de-sac.
I think that's.
Is that Cedar?
Wood, Woodstone Road?
It could be Woodstone, I'm sorry.
Dave, do you know? Can you take?
I don't know where we're pointing.
If you look at the title sheet on the site plans, it should say so.
Yeah.
Could you put the title sheet up here?
Sure.
Why don't you ask your digital assistant?
I'm sorry. We'll get there. There we go.
Does it show?
Lord Stelling Road.
Oh, it's Peachtree, it's Peachtree.
Peachtree down there.
Peachtree?
Yep.
Oh, oh, it, it.
Yeah.
It, it meets Woodstone.
It's the end of Peachtree.
End of Peachtree, okay.
There's actually, yeah, so there's, there's a, a lot here, a lot here. This is on Woodstone and these two are on Peachtree. Uh, those are the only, those are our only neighbors and they are about 20 to 30 foot higher than our, our field.
Those are all on the southwest corner?
Yes, they're all on the southwest corner of the field. Uh, northwest is us, it's all wooded. And then approximately 200 feet away is, is the existing football stadium. Uh, to the north is the town DPW facility. Uh, there are two neighbors located between us and Maple, and South Maple.
On the east?
On the east side. On the south side are township, uh, park facilities. The dog walk park and the softball field. And, uh, across the street are more neighbors, I think there are farms and, there's a farm in one, one house.
So the area between Peachtree, um, mainly, and maybe a little bit of Woodstone, is that wooded? Or is that open space? Is that, what kind of landscaping is between?
There's a house here on the southwest corner.
I understand there's a house, I'm asking what kind of landscaping or buffer is there between?
Is there any buffer?
Yes, there is.
Between?
It's wooded.
Okay, that's what.
Our property is wooded, and then we have the existing field.
Okay, so the four lights that you mentioned along that area, they're pointing in what direction?
There's two lights on the, which will be on the field itself, and they will be pointing down into the east.
How high, how high are the lights?
Uh, I believe they're 85 feet.
And how high are the trees in comparison?
Uh, probably about the same.
And the lights are pointing towards the field, away from?
Yeah, they're, they're pointing, one of the reasons you have high, high, such high poles is because you want them pointing down and they cut off, they're, they're dig, they're now LED lights, they're not the old style floodlights. They're LED lights, they're very, they're very focused and they're just on the field.
Are they on timers, or what, how are they?
The way it works is you present a schedule to the, uh, the, uh, supplier. And you, you provide your schedule for, and they time the lights.
They program it?
They program it, and they have a central programming. If you wanna change that, the athletic director typically has, uh, on his cell phone, has an app that he can contact, I think it's North Carolina, and say, we want the lights on, we want the lights off, and what time we want them on.
Who's the manufacturer of these lights?
Uh, well, Musco was recommended, but we're not sure that Musco's gonna be getting it or not. We had, I think, three different, uh, vendors that were part of different bids that we're, we're looking at. Musco is what we typically use, that's why I said North Carolina because that's where their headquarters is.
Are there lights on the other side of the soccer field or on the baseball field?
No. There's no lights here, no lights, the only lights are on the main stadium.
I think on the other side of the soccer field, on the east side of soccer field, there are two more lights, aren't there? Did you say that?
Yeah, well, we'll have four lights on the soccer field itself. And they're, they'll be pointed down at the soccer field.
But there'll be lights on both sides of the soccer?
Yes, yes.
And they're pointing down, is there any shield around the lights?
No, because they're, they're LEDs, they're not, they're not your typical bulbs, they're, they're flat panels, LEDs.
You're saying you don't need shields anymore because of the modern technology?
It's a flat, it's a flat piece of wood, not wood, uh, metal, uh, like two by three. And it's just aimed like that, straight down at the field.
Okay.
And the LEDs are inside that. It's only about that thick.
You know, a lot of the problems that I've encountered on this board have been because of lighting and landscaping. And the lighting, uh, was, uh, when we see Fellowship Village, the mosque, Dune Meadows, where the lights were, I don't know whether it was the angle or the brightness, in one case it was the brightness of them, that we had an inability to place. And we had to, to address that.
Sure.
Some of the, some of the ways that they were gonna address it were to plant additional trees. But when they planted the trees, they were six feet high.
Right.
And maybe in a couple of years, or in a year, they might be torn with the block to let out. You're talking about 85-foot lights, and if there's any light pollution from them, people close to it, to the stadium, might have a problem with that.
There is no spillage.
Did you talk to the people whose houses are closest?
I, um, I think Mr. Rollo did, but let me just explain this. With the new digit, with the new digital LED lights, there is zero spillage. Uh, once you're, as a matter of fact, once you're 10 feet off of the field itself, you would need a flashlight.
Yeah, we actually have.
We actually have a, uh, computer-generated, computer.
Picture.
Actually, why don't you come on here? Let's get, let's get some testimony in this, and when he refers to this picture, email that picture to the Board Secretary, and we're gonna print it out, and that's gonna be exhibit A2. So, let's, uh, can you guys identify yourself for the record?
James Rollo, Business Administrator. Hold on, where's the, where's the camera?
Just speak into the mic.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, you can just take that, put it on the laptop, just turn it around towards the board.
Okay.
Just put it around the table.
So, um, what we have.
Can you bring the mic towards you so we have records?
Maybe I'll sit where you go. Okay. So, um.
I get your.
Uh, James Rollo, Business Administrator.
And can you talk about?
Board of Education.
The neighbors first?
So, uh, a superintendent sent out a letter to the, um, neighbors on Peachtree Road telling them of our, um, our plans for the field and also sharing, uh, this picture and inviting them to reach out to our facilities director if they had any questions or concerns. Um, as of today, two residents did reach out. They weren't concerned about the lights, they were most concerned about the PA system, to which we said there is no PA system on this field.
That would be my next question.
It's the, it's the leave field, but with lights so far, we have not heard, uh, from any of the residents.
Now, can you identify that photo exhibit, whatever you wanna call it, that's up on your laptop?
Yes.
What is that?
So, this is two pictures of, from a neighborhood of two different, um, stadium lights installed in Bud Lake, New Jersey, um, in Turkey Brook Park. One set of lights, the ones that.
To the left.
Where, where you can see this, this is standing outside of the park in the residential neighborhood. These residents that I, I know from this area have been vocal that they're not thrilled with the light pollution. And you can see why, I mean, it's, it lights up their whole backyard. Um, so that was one set of lights that was installed in 2012. The second set is a field that's adjacent to the first set. Um, this was installed in 2018. These are the downward LED lights that doesn't have the light spillage. And you step off the field and you're in the dark. So what the picture is, this picture was taken in March where all the leaves are off the trees on the same street. It's actually the same set of houses.
These were taken in March of what year?
Uh, this year.
It's in Bud Lake, you say?
In Bud Lake, Sunset Drive and Bud Lake. Adjacent to Turkey Brook Park.
Turkey what?
Turkey Brook.
Turkey Brook. So your testimony is the lights you're proposing are gonna look like the ones on the right?
Exactly, and this is with the lights on, turned on. So I turned the old style system on, and you can see how it lit up the neighborhood. I turned that off, and then I turned the new style system on and took this picture. And that's the difference.
So if you need a flashlight to get off the field, is there some kind of safety lighting too?
So, I, I believe we had talked about illuminating the walkways.
Yes, we're going to have bollard lights along the walkway.
Oh, so it's not the only lights?
Well, I, I mean, we're.
No, I know they're bollard lights, but you do have more lights, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you're, you obviously need them for safety purposes, right?
And we have, you know, obviously we have existing lights on the parking lot.
All right, so whose laptop is this?
So, I think, but. This is super.
Who's gonna email this picture to the Board Secretary?
I have the email set up, I just need an address to send it to.
What's your address?
I think it's J.S.L.A.M.A.N.
I think.
We write it down.
Jay Sloan.
I found my phone.
Yeah, Jay Sloan.
I could, I could send it.
S.L.A.M.A.N.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have it, I have.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. I have your email.
So, that's exhibit, that's gonna be exhibit A2, when it comes in, if you can just print it, put it in the file.
Yeah, next time it would be helpful to have that in advance.
And the picture on the right shows that there's no spillage of the.
Right.
Yeah, and they say a picture is worth a thousand words, that picture is worth a thousand words.
Are, did you plant any additional trees or shrubs or anything to light the light in any of the areas, or is it not needed? Are, did you plant any additional trees or shrubs or anything to block the light in any of the areas or is it not needed?
It, well, we, it's, as soon as you leave the field here, it's fairly heavily wooded and we don't plan on really touching much of that. And as soon as you're on the field, you're on the field. We can't put landscaping on the field.
That's not what I'm saying.
We're very limited to our, our footprint here. We tried to minimize-
Were, were looking to add any additional, uh, foliage in order to, to block light? That's what you were considering, but-
I think his point is it's not necessary because of the light situation.
So no additional landscaping is going in this at all?
No, and, uh-
Whether it's for light spillage or just ornamental?
Just ornament. No, we're not, we're not proposing any and additional, just so you know, is these light, these houses on Peachtree, I said, are uh, twenty to thirty feet higher than the field. It's a very, this is a very steep slope going up in this direction. So they're gonna be looking down on the field. That's why I, I'm not concerned at all about spillage from the lights.
Wooden slope.
It's a wooden slope, heavily wooden slope.
Yeah.
Good. In, in terms of the turf, what type of turf are you using? Because there's a lot of, you know-
There's two different ones and we haven't made a decision yet. Uh, we bid one as the base model, which is your typical field turf, which is-
That's the one with all, all the little black and when you-
Spade from tire debris and has contaminants to the-
Ends, ends up on your shag carpeting.
Yeah.
Second one, which is a more expensive system, is called Pivot Turf, which has, uh, very little sand infill and no rubber infill. So, and the board has not made a decision which one they wanted to get.
It's obviously more expensive.
Yes.
When you guys-
But it's cleaner.
When the board approved the YMCA, they had the traditional, well, the little, you know, black rubber things that if you slide on the field-
It's also not good for your lungs. That's why the women get cancer.
The, the good news is even the field turf that we're proposing has a, an added element called Cool Play. Cool Play is on top of those rubber pellets are bigger green pellets, which don't get into everything. So, but I'm not gonna lie. You're still gonna get the black pellets everywhere.
So we, go ahead. I was just gonna say, um, so we talked about noise pollution. What about, we, we talked about light pollution. Moving on to noise pollution, you said there won't be a PA system, but what are the hours of, of use for this field?
Come on, you're, you're gonna shorn.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to be here with us. I really, really appreciate it.
Um, so the field use for the students, um, would probably be similar to what they're doing now with after-school practices. You know, in the three to six, seven, uh, PM timeframe. Certainly with the lights, there's more flexibility for the athletic director to schedule things. Uh, so, you know, using the lights, they might have practices that would go later, but obviously, um, you know, similar to Mountain Park, um, there could be facility rentals where, um, you know, the, the board could try to, you know, offset some of its expense with some, some rental. Um, so that would, that would come down to the, to the town and, you know, uh, private renters that might wanna rent the space. Um, you know, typically, um, board policy-wise, it's ten PM is the cutoff on, um, facility rentals. So, uh, you know, certainly we're not looking at people, you know, having the lights on overnight and things like that.
So I would assume you're looking to rent it out. I mean, Burnards, I mean, uh, Burnardsville rents theirs.
Sure.
Mountain Park has done a lot of rentals. You're obviously looking to recoup some of the costs. So, let's just say that's in play, right?
Sure.
Okay, so is there anything for like Saturday, Sunday or Sunday cutoff?
No, I, I think it's a little earlier on Sundays. If I remember correctly, I have to check the board policy. It might be like eight PM on Sundays. But I can get back to you guys on that and, and check that and get back to my laptop.
When you say board policy, you mean school board policy?
Yeah, school board policy on facility use rental.
And when you communicated with the local residents in the area about these investments, was there a communication on the time in which they would be used?
No, no. It was, it was designed to let them know that the board would be discussing it, um, in all likelihood at the next board event meeting on the twenty-ninth to give them the exhibit on the lights and to, to make sure that they were aware, um, what their resources were, if they had questions, who they could talk to or come to the board meeting and, and ask other questions.
What's the board policy in terms of the start time?
In the morning, again, I'd have to check that. We don't usually have anything really early in the morning and not anything that would use lights.
Does the same ten o'clock board and, um, requirement also apply to people who rent the field?
Yes, that, that's not, that's actually in the facility use rental policy, ten, ten o'clock cutoff.
So neighbors wouldn't have to worry about it if it went past ten o'clock?
Right.
Uh, my timing question wasn't really about the lights, but more about kind of the noise, but, you know-
Sure.
If you're looking at a Saturday morning, seven AM start with a club soccer tournament on the field.
Yeah, I can check. I, I'll check the policy and get that information for you guys. Um, I, I can look to see if there's a morning start there might be. I just remember there being the ten, ten PM cutoff. But we can check on the morning start.
I mean, you're hearing our concerns for protecting the neighbors.
Sure, yep.
Um, okay. You wanna continue your testimony?
I think he's done.
Are you?
Yeah, we're, we're pretty much done. I'm just taking questions now.
I have a question about the detention basin. Is the detention basin gonna have one of those shelves for safety?
We actually, um, we've designed it so it doesn't need it and the reason I'm saying that is because it's not gonna be that deep. It's only gonna be, uh, the water elevation during the storm is only gonna be, I think, uh, three and a half feet deep.
But you're adjacent to a field where children are coming to play.
And there'll be a fence around it.
Oh, there will be a fence. Okay, and how high is the fence?
The fence will be a four-foot, uh, stockade fence.
And will it be like a, obviously, you'll, you'll be all code. There'll be life preserve, uh, one of those ranges.
Yes, it's, as I said, if that detention basin is full of water, there's not gonna be anybody near it because it's a deluge coming down.
It's not actually gonna be a stockade fence. It'll be an open fence?
It's the open fence, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did say stockade.
Yeah, I said, uh, split run.
And does that have a, uh, the retention basins have an overflow and then it, it egress to the, the storm sewer in, in South Maple?
Well, yeah, what, what, what occurs is, and if you're familiar with this parking lot, there's a stone swale running along the side of the parking lot. Uh, there's going to be an outlet chamber with a, with an emergency overflow that goes into that stone swale. And then that stone swale goes into an inlet, which goes under South Maple and then, uh, out into the Great Swamp.
Okay. I just know, um, parts of South Maple, Dave, you probably knows, don't even have a storm sewer, like a little north of the municipal building. There's a section where there's no storm sewer whatsoever. So it's, South Maple kinda floods out to begin with, so I was just curious how it's gonna affect it.
There's dual culverts. There's a culvert here that goes out and then by the, uh, town property, there's another culvert which goes to a separate stream.
Okay.
Which would meet about a thousand feet, uh, east of the site. Thank you.
You had indicated there were two town parks at the south portion of this.
This is, this is a town park, yes.
Okay, is that War Memorial? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yep. How is the drainage system going to affect the two town parks?
We're actually reducing the amount of water going to that.
Okay.
By, by taking out the entire soccer field and storing that underneath the soccer field, then directing it over this way. We're, we're, we're removing that whole section that, that was flowing towards there.
So just to be clear, because this is important, you're, you're actually reducing the storm water runoff towards the War Memorial Field?
Yes.
And what other area did you say?
Well, uh, we're, by the detention basin, we're reducing the rate of runoff, uh, to, uh, the storm sewer in Maple also.
You have an answer, I guess.
Eight AM.
Can you come on right up to the microphone?
Yep. Okay, uh, just to clarify, the timing by board policy, there's not an exception on Sundays, but the start time is eight AM and the end time is ten PM. The exact wording is you shall only be permitted between the hours of eight AM and ten PM unless approved by superintendent.
By who?
The superintendent.
By you.
By me. I've never been asked to do something different than eight AM to ten PM.
How many people can the bleachers hold?
About sixty-five people, seventy people.
Or per? There's three, right?
Yeah, there's three. Um, they're five rows apiece. Yeah, you might be able to get a hundred and-
I was thinking-
Hundred twenty people there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably around a hundred.
And, um, for the netting, because I know there's been incidents at Mountain Park with the lacrosse balls hitting people, pedestrians, and it's very dangerous. I mean, they can be very serious.
They hurt.
So-
They hurt.
What's that?
They hurt.
Well, they do more than hurt. They can break bones. Yeah, um, so could you just go over the netting for the lacrosse field?
Sure, there's, there's netting, there's netting along the end line on the south side and there's netting, there's a, actually, there's a wall with netting on top of it along the east side.
So if someone's at the dog park-
North side, I'm sorry, north side and south side, yeah.
So where there'll be pedestrians or where people congregated, like the-
The bleachers.
Bleachers?
Also, is it gonna be like a hockey arena where there's-
No, uh, typically for, uh, spectators, you don't, you don't have netting between, on the sidelines. And that's how the football, that's how that works now with the main stadium. You put it on the ends actually because the hard passes, there's, when they're shooting.
Right, I understand that. So my question is, where is the dog park in relation to that?
Dog park's down here. There's a wooded area and a wetland in between us.
Okay, so there's netting there.
Yeah.
So the dog park is, the dog park is south of the netting and the wooded area.
Yes.
Okay, and what's above the other part where the netting will be?
There's a wall and then the netting will be on top of the wall.
And what's behind that?
Uh, pathway and then the baseball field.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And do we have other questions? Yes, Mr. Rubino?
Just to revisit the lighting, so it's a downward facing, so what's the reach, right? Because you've gotta cover the entire field from east to west.
Yes.
And they're both facing downward on both sides. How many LED bulbs are each of the four fixtures?
Well, no, there's four poles. Each pole has eight fixtures.
Yep, what I'm asking, if it's downward facing, the lights don't cover the field, right? So if they're downward facing, what's the reach outside the frame?
Well, it's, the whole thing is designed by lighting engineers, so you have a, basically a fifty-foot candle average, uh, uh, coverage over the entire field.
Okay, so at eighty-five feet high, if I'm a resident on the other side of the field, am I able to see lighting, right? Is it, so it, it may not light my, my yard, but can I, is, is it in my line of sight?
You will, you will see the lights. There won't be, there won't be a lot of glare to them, but you will see the lights. There's, and I gotta remember, it, it, the, like, the lights on, typical lights what you're used to seeing is you have, uh, twenty-five fixtures per pole. Uh, just gigantic, uh, metal halide-
If you look at exhibit A two, the running picture, you can see, you can see the lights in the picture, but they're not shining out.
Yeah, you know, you don't have these fifteen hundred metal hal, fifteen hundred watt metal halide lights with round bottoms. I mean, they're flat panels and they're just, they're, they're specifically designed to aim to a certain part of the field.
You see, well, we, we've had problems with lights, when it's just in one one.
I think you're referring, yeah.
Lights when they're inside in garages when people are-
I don't think they're the same type of lights though.
Yeah, but-
They're not the-
They're not the same type of lights, but I'm sure these are gonna be a lot brighter.
They're, they're, but they're not, what you, what you have problems with, and this is, this is why when I always talk about field lights, you want them high, because the problems of lights you have are low and aimed out.
Yeah.
These are high and aimed down. And that's the difference. It's a huge difference because if it's aimed out, it can go two, three thousand feet and you're gonna see it. When you're aimed down, you can't see, you can see, you can see the light. You can see, you know, emitting light down.
You can see the light source, but the light's not shining at you. That's what you're trying to say?
Right, yeah.
And how far away is, again, how many feet is that? I know there's woods between the soccer field, but how far is, like-
Nearest house.
Nearest house is probably a little over a hundred feet.
And you didn't hear any objections from those houses?
No.
And you did tell them about the lights?
Yes, we, um, sent letters to the residents at the intersection of Peachtree and Woodstone. There's about ten houses there, the ones that are closest to the southwest.
Here, here.
And the, and the two residents that are over on Maple, even though they're, they're much further off.
So you did the two hundred foot notice? Is that what you're saying?
You don't have to.
No, there's no two hundred foot notice.
Oh, you didn't have to?
A capital. And-
But just to be a good neighbor, you did this?
Well-
Yeah.
Yes.
Just to let them know what was going on and answer questions and invite them to the board meeting.
To the board event.
Just remind me that the questions you got from the neighbors were not about the lights, they were about noise?
The two emails we got were about whether or not there was gonna be a PA system, right?
Can you confirm that?
Yeah.
Did, did any neighbors ask about the lights or did they only ask about the PA system?
Jim will check those emails first, but yeah, those are two.
And since I've done quite a few of these fields and typically the question is not the lights. Typically the question is what's going on at nine o'clock at night on a Friday night and the noise involved? That's usually what's-
Or eight in the morning.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the high schools, especially when they have football, and they're, we're not having, you know, organized football practices up top, but they'll put a PA system on with music and everything else. We're not having a PA system. And that's usually what the complaint is by most of the neighbors, is the noise.
Is your scoreboard just gonna be a scoreboard or is it gonna be one of those?
No, no.
Video, video footage?
We're not, I'm sure somebody would like to have video.
The thing you see in, uh-
We have an exist-
Kansas.
We have an existing scoreboard on the field right now and we'll have a glorified version of that, but we're not putting Nick's face on it, don't worry.
Just like Madison gave us a memo. Let's get an answer to the-
Hold on, we have a question for Mr. Crane, please. Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Um, I didn't see any stormwater report. Um-
He didn't see any stormwater?
I hear it, I hear it.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Can, can you go over, if you can meet the new standards of the flood hazard example, like a, a, a twelve inch rainfall or a hundred year? And can you also discuss if you have any recharge going on here?
Uh, yes, we have recharge underneath the, uh, the new field.
Under the soccer field.
Under the soccer field. The whole area is recharge. Uh, we've, we've done in accordance with the two ten and, and hundred year storm reductions and, uh-
And you comply?
We've complied, yes. And we've prepared a stormwater management report which we, uh, will submit, we submitted to soil conservation. We'll be submitting it to town too.
And, and do you meet the new, uh, storm ranks for a twelve inch rainfall, approximately a twelve inch rainfall for a hundred year storm?
Yes, yeah, the, the future, the future rainfall, that's what the, the detention pond was designed for.
Okay, one, one other question. The, um, foundation for the lights are going down quite a distance. I think it's fourteen feet. Uh, have you done geotechnical and have you hit rock and if you have hit rock or you will hit rock, is your contractor capable of drilling without blessing?
Uh, your answers are yes and surprisingly, no. We've done geotechnical borings at all four locations and we have not hit rock, which has surprised me tremendously. It, yeah, you're right, there are about fourteen foot holes. Uh, we had a complete geotechnical report for which the foundations were, for the poles were designed.
Okay, and one last question. The current state of, of the project, it appears there's no detention facilities, basins.
You mean the existing?
There's no current, pre-existing detention facility.
No.
Okay, so this, this will actually reduce the water, like you said, to an awesome service?
Yes, there, yeah, the, the two detention facilities we're using are underneath the soccer field. We're having eighteen inches of stone to hold all the, all the runoff from the soccer field and also the detention pond to hold the, you know, to, to try to mitigate the flood, the flow from the, uh, baseball field and, uh, the area around the soccer field.
That's, that's all the questions. Thank you.
Okay, so the, now we have the answer on the emails from the neighbors, which is?
Yes, uh, and I quote, I, this is our facilities director. I have received calls from two of our neighbors on Peachtree regarding soccer field improvements. Both were actually less concerned with the lights than the noise from our PA systems and what sound may come from additional use. I told them at this time, there are not any provisions in the plans for PA system.
At this time?
Well, it's not, it's not part of the project.
It's not part of the project.
Sorry.
We've not, haven't had any discussions about it.
So less concerned, not, uh, not concerned, you know, so did they table questions?
Jim, just to clarify, those were phone calls you said, not emails, because I said emails before they were. Oh, yeah, phone calls. And, and the, the letter did invite, um, them to attend the, the board meeting as well.
And the board meeting's upcoming?
On the twenty-ninth, yes.
Twenty-ninth September.
Do you know of anywhere, uh, closer than, would you say that? Bud Lake, Bud, Bud Lake? Somewhere closer that has that?
The lights, but, but like, somewhere closer that has that, uh, those lights set up? I, I don't.
Not off the top of my head, um, all the ones I've, all the, it's, the digital, the digital, uh, LED lights came into their own around, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Uh, I know we did a phil, facility in Waldwick, they've dusted a separate facility in Waldwick, uh, we've done Garfield, uh, we've done facilities, where the, there actually are some retrofits now where towns are using the same poles, taking the, the old Musco lights off of them and putting the new LEDs on them, uh, but, uh.
So they're conversions?
Yeah.
I, I assume that most high schools that have turf fields and have lights already had it. How many projects are you seeing like this where you're still converting a, you know, a natural turf field to artificial turf with lights?
We're only doing about two or three a year now, at one point.
Right, you were going gangbusters.
We were, it was, it, it, I, I run the site civil department of Boswell, which is a large firm, and it was probably fifty percent of our site civil work, uh, five, six years ago, so.
I assume, I'll switch this as a question, do you anticipate that the next wave of these sorts of projects are gonna be the swapouts of the, you know, the high-density, high lights to the digital LEDs?
Uh, well, the, I'll, I'll tell you, this is how it works out. Musco guarantees the lights, their old lights, for ten years. At that point, they put up cranes and replace every single light, so.
But do they replace them with the new LEDs?
No, with the old ones.
Right.
So once that second ten-year cycle runs its course, you'll see the swaps, because.
But you're thinking it's twenty years from they, when they originally went up until you'll see a lot of these new digital LEDs?
Well, the, the big thing is, twelve to, twelve to sixteen, one hundred, one thousand five hundred watt bulbs compared to, uh, eight sixty-watt pads. Your electricity bill is probably ten percent.
And there's no dimming switch on these LEDs, right?
Oh, there's, well, you, you can get them dimmed, you can get them in colors, you can get them to flash.
Well, are you planning to do flashing colors or dim?
Typically, typically, we don't do that, but you can, you can get them to everything.
I mean, this project's a little different, right, because there are people, it's obviously, it's a no-brainer to upgrade to old lights, but there are no lights on the field now, so now we're adding light.
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure it doesn't disturb the neighborhood.
So there's no plan to have these be dimmable?
Uh, right now, no, but it's, it's, it's a, it's an easy fix, but the, the problem is, when you're playing on the field, there's standards that you have to meet.
Yeah.
And you have to meet those standards, you can't dim the light, because then it's a safety issue.
My point was, is we're gonna find something closer is because most of the artificial turf and lights were already up at higher schools, and you're gonna have to wait until it's economically.
Right, I got, I understand that.
Because if we find a visit, Bud Lake, you just see for ourselves.
I don't think.
The picture's great. Well, you can see, you can see in the trees, if you superintendent had, you can see the light, but it's shaded by the trees.
You know, Mr. Lazinski.
There's light there, you can still see light.
This is.
Now, I understand it's not illuminating my backyard, but some people may have an issue that the light is there, I don't know. You know, I've seen people, I've seen people get upset for crazier things. And technically, under thirty-one A, the board has forty-five days to make the determination from once they submitted it, but.
They will also.
I think you should get to.
Yeah, I think that they'll also have a chance.
I think you should get to Beth's report and see what she thinks, because that's really the issue.
What we're doing, yeah. Yeah, I think that we've fleshed out the light issue, I think that you may get some questions at your board of ed hearing from the neighbors.
They're giving you a preview of what the neighbors might ask.
So, um, with that, are there any other questions?
So I wanna go through just the.
Yes, yeah, I, right, yes, go ahead, Mr. Crane.
I've got a few recommendations on the, on the last page, on page three. Uh, first one I see, it's about, um, tree removal, any tree removal plan for the site?
There are some trees to be removed, uh, primarily interior for the detention pond and for the area, is as this is.
Because in here, this central part of the site.
The central part of the site, yes.
They're gonna be removed because of what's going there that requires them to be removed?
There'll be grading, the, the shifting of the, uh, there'll be grading in the, uh, east area of the, of the field, and the shifting of the pathway would require some trees to be removed, interior. And when the detention pond is built, I think there's about five or six trees in there that will have to come down.
Five or six, okay, and then, um.
Hold on, hold on, go ahead.
While we're on that, I'm sorry to.
Are you, are you green or red?
I'm green.
Okay.
Um, along that residence along South Maple, where the, uh, stone swells going.
Yes.
In there, the, those trees, and I know there's some, uh, existing lesser scrubby-type vegetation, but it seems to be providing the only screening between the existing parking lot and that residence on South Maple Avenue. But now that's gonna be all cleared out.
Some of it, uh, we're, we're gonna try to maintain what's there, what's there now is about, I think, five or six feet wide, and we're gonna try to maintain that with larger stone, and when I talked with Tim, the biggest problem was they put three-quarter inch stone in there, and a lot of it moved, and we're gonna be putting in gabion, uh, baskets.
I'm just thinking about the buffering that's there.
I know, I know, and, you know, there's some underbrush that's gonna go, it's, you know, some underbrush, since this bill, it's come back in.
Is there a plan to maintain or replace the buffering between the, there's a row of parking spaces all head in, aiming right at that house. So that's the concern that I would have with the buffer there.
Could you point to that, Mr. Schley?
Right here.
Okay, so Mr. Schley is right, that, you know, we wanna protect the neighbor that's now buffered from the parking lot. So is it your testimony that you're gonna maintain as best possible?
We will maintain what's there as best possible, obviously, we're gonna have to get in there and reinforce that swell, uh, but anything between the swell and the properties, we will, we will keep, uh, but between the parking lot and the swell, I don't believe there's very much there now between the parking lot and the swell itself, I think it's primarily grass, but we'll do our best to, to, to maintain it.
Would you also, if you have to remove something, be inclined to replace it?
Depending on the budget, we would, we would look at, we would look at that, we, you know, we have, we have, uh, bids already out, and, uh, it would be an extra cost, obviously, but we'll, we can consider it.
Well, I think this board would feel a lot more comfortable with the fact that there would be a replacement, yeah, I would, I would recommend that you replace in kind any vegetation or, uh, with larger trees, I should say, that you do.
I wouldn't say replace in kind, because most of it's just large, weak.
Well, replace.
You don't have to agree, this is just, this is her opinion, that it looks like the board's gonna recommend this, but don't.
Sure, not a problem.
Don't fight it, don't agree, just listen.
You got, you got the gist, it doesn't have to be the exact item, but we're trying to save you a headache from the neighbors.
Uh, final thing back to the lighting, um, she asked us if it's dark sky approved, I don't know what that is, are you familiar with that term? And are these lights dark sky approved?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if they're dark sky approved, I know they're a lot closer to dark sky approved than what was out there.
Do you have a definition for that?
Dark sky approved is, um, A, it's, uh, no upward.
It's an organization that has standards, correct?
Yes, they have standards, and their primary standard is they don't want anything shining up.
They don't want, it's for migratory birds not to, and, um, wildlife not to get impacted by the lighting.
Yeah, but, you know, a lot of dark sky approved is parking lot lights where they want everything aimed down, because you don't want light pollution. And the whole idea, the whole idea of the, of the LED lights is to avoid as much light, light pollution as possible.
Correct. Okay, so, did you read, Ms., oh, you, you did not see Ms. McManus's memo, did you? Do, Mr. Drill, is there anything we need to do before we go on to this?
Well, I think, so we have Mr. Schley here, Mr. Schley, I know that this is not your memo. The board has two planning experts, Mr. Schley is the township planner and a board planning expert, and we have Beth McManus. Beth McManus did a memo dated September fourteenth, but, Mr. Schley, could you just summarize Ms. McManus's findings as to master plan consistency?
Uh, sure, I'm referring to Ms. McManus's, uh, report dated September fourteen, twenty twenty-five. On page one, uh, she states that the, the planned improvements are not inconsistent with the township's twenty twenty-three master plan. In fact, there are sections that are supportive of the proposed amendments.
And then she goes through the details, I'm not gonna ask you to summarize that, but Beth's conclusion was, it's not inconsistent with the master plan, and then she gives all of her reasons. Now, if anyone has any specific questions about her reasons, I suggest you ask Mr. Schley about that.
Okay, so.
It looked like anyone had any questions about that.
So then I'm going to ask for a motion to refer this to.
You wanna ask any member of the public, since technically, technically this is a hearing.
Oh, thank you, yes, let's not.
We can't see him because he's behind the plan, which might not be a bad thing, but I know he's out there. The only reason I can say that is we went to high school, same high school together.
See, I called you to move over, I almost forgot.
In my sister's class, two years younger, but that's the only reason I get to tease him without him getting insulted, right?
Never insulted.
Can you identify yourself with the record?
Todd Edelstein, one seven two, Verzog, right.
Chad, do you just wanna ask questions or you also wanna make comments?
No comments, just.
Really?
Nah, not today. I was just wondering, um, are you gonna be changing any of the parking, or is the parking stayed exactly the same?
Parking stays exactly the same.
Okay, so no increase, even though you have better lighting and more fields, drawing more, possibly more people, you're not gonna change parking at all?
No.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Did I mention Todd's last name for the record, Todd Edelman, did I say that?
Edelstein.
Edelstein, did I, did I say that? Well, now we, now it's part of the record.
Welcome back, Mr. Edelstein, we haven't seen, we haven't had a hearing in a while for an application. Okay, so now, can we move to a motion?
Yeah.
To refer this?
Well, it's, it's been referred to you.
Right.
So the motion's either that the board finds that the plan is consistent, is inconsistent, or is not inconsistent, and your planning expert, Beth McManus, has concluded it's not inconsistent, and then you can get around, then you can say, okay, does anyone have any recommendations they wanna make? So.
So do I have a motion that, I will make the motion, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to, uh, determine that, aligned with our experts' testimony and memo, that, um, we find that.
The project is not inconsistent with the master.
Inconsistent with the master plan, thank you.
Okay, so that's the first part of the motion.
That was Mr. Seville and his, uh.
So let's, we're gonna do two motions, one on that and one on the recommendation, so anyone gonna second that motion?
I will second the motion. Roll call, please, Ms. Selin.
Mr. Ravino.
Yes.
Mr. Lazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi.
Yes.
Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Mr. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Eorio.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Chairwoman, Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, before you make the motion on the recommendations, why don't you discuss what recommendations people would like to see be part of that motion? I assume the first one is about replacing any landscaping that's removed, is that correct?
Well, any trees that are removed.
Well, let me ask, you know.
Go ahead.
Why don't you ask Mr. Schley to make a recommendation, here, the, the board's concern is, is about keeping a screening.
Between.
At the park, from the, from the parking lot area.
Yeah, I think, actually, in that specific case, I think the trees that are taken out are, are older evergreen trees, that the only screening provided is by the trunk, because all the branches start like twenty feet in the air, but I think it's the underbrush and any other things. Some of it's hard to tell, it might be actually on the neighbor's property, I'm not sure, and, uh, it's a, m- maintaining a screen mainly, uh, for headlight glare, which is pretty, could be pretty significant there.
A screen.
Of the parking, of the existing parking.
Parking lot, headlight glare on residences to the east, is that correct?
South.
Residents to the south?
Yeah.
Okay, residents to the south.
It's only one residence, uh, on South Maple Avenue, I don't know the address.
So that's Mr. Schley's recommendation?
And mine.
That's his suggestion for a first recommendation, anyone have any other recommendations to make?
I have one on noise, obviously, um, no exterior PA system or exterior speakers, can you put that out?
Yeah, no PA system, yeah.
I have one on usage, hour usage, I would like to see that the hours are such that they're established by the board of ed now in their policy, eight AM to ten PM, all days.
Okay. Any other?
Maybe determining what the capacity might be?
What capacity?
The, uh, for, uh, for usage, people.
I don't know.
If parking, you know, the parking spectators. Recommendation?
You know, you said that each, I think I heard this, that each bleacher would hold sixty-five people, and there were three bleachers, so that would be almost two hundred people, I like.
Thank you.
You would say one twenty-five, or?
I think that's a tough one to.
I don't, I think that would really go beyond the scope of what we need to talk about tonight.
I think that is to be on our scope. Any other recommendations? Okay, so seeing that, we're gonna make a.
So a motion, create the following recommendations, number one, maintain a screen from, for parking lot headlight glare on residences to the south, no PA system, hours of use eight AM to ten PM.
Correct.
Someone wanna make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ravino seconds, roll call.
Mr. Ravino.
Yes.
Mr. Lazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi.
Yes.
Mr. Crane.
Yes.
Mr. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Eorio.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I do need to do anything to report anymore?
No, the board secretary, the board secretary, they're gonna put a letter in the grab, and anytime privileged to me, I'll review it. Once it's in final form, she'll sign it, scan it, the letter will be addressed to the business administrator. Anyone who wants a copy of the letter, it'll be CC'd, drop your business card over or give your name to her right now.
Yeah, and, and thank you for your preparation on this and for bringing, coming out in force.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, comments from members. Any comments?
That's none.
I hope everybody had a great summer.
Yeah, we didn't have a lot of business, um, we are going to be canceling the next meeting, which I believe is October seventh, and we will be in attendance on October twenty-first for the Fellowship Village Parking Report, and maybe some other business. So, we've kind of had a light calendar, which has been nice, but we're gonna be gearing up, um, we don't have anything else yet, um, coming our way. We're waiting for a few things, so I appreciate everyone showing up for this and asking some really good questions, you know? I think we did good work tonight. Anyone else have any comments, comments from staff?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, okay, then I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, motion to adjourn, yeah, I didn't.